Okay, good. We'll call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, April 15th, 2019, 6:30 PM. City Council Room, all members of the council are present. Others includes James Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The second item is to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2019, and I entertain a motion.
To approve the minutes of April...
First.
First, sorry. 2019.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion on the minutes. Having none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next is comments by members of the public. I didn't see anyone that signed up, so we'll move on. The next is Bruce James from Vermont's North Country Chamber of Commerce with an update.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to get together with everyone and let you know how excited we are for the summer that's coming up here and all the things that can take place. I just wanted to bring you in that loop a little bit from what we know. One of the things, and I did make some notes, so I don't forget much. But one of the things that we had set out for a goal that we wanted to try and do is to bring some more train excursions into town, and that's going to happen. So we've got a train excursion that's going to bring about 130 people into town in late June, and then we're working also on another train excursion to come in later on in the summer. And what we really want to do is we really want to have another train excursion for the Fall Foliage Festival. We think that would just rock the place. So just a quick update that we have that going on for us. We understand that the Northern Star is getting close to being put back in the water, and we'll all expect some good news on that May 1st, and so I'm excited about that. We've been, one of our major goals is to try to be more welcoming to Canadians and to have them feel more comfortable about coming to town. So what we've, we've been in discussions with customers, the immigrations, we understand that they're going to work on bringing in two more, two additional areas for boaters and the yachtsmen and that kind of stuff to check in, which will make it much easier, and it will also allow no more waiting lines, hopefully. But, you know, on the outset, what that really means is it means that we are welcoming community, it means that the things that used to go on before 911, before 9/11, we can start to get back to that. We can, you know, have more events on the lake and really bring the Canadian visitors into town, so that's good. The, there's going to be a ribbon-cutting ceremony coming up for the, on the border in Derby Line that's going to say a lot, too. We hope to be able to get the message to the 250,000 people in the Sherbrooke area that we, as a community, are welcoming and moving in that direction. The Chamber is looking at also having additional events that we continue to work on. We had, one of the, some of the things that we hope that we can do is we want to build on what was going on with Wednesdays on the Waterfront, have some jazz concerts. And I don't mean major, I'm talking about hometown, but still. Go in that route, bring some Quebecois music and entertainment in, into town. And so we're hoping that, we had started discussions with the state on leasing the green space, but now that the city's going to lease it, then we're, we're going to defer to the city, and I hope that when that, when that does occur, that in our discussions with the city, I'm hoping that the council will be as welcoming and as neighborly as we are, and work with us on event fees. Because if we don't all work together and pull in the same direction to make sure that we can make these things happen, to get these 245,000, 250,000 people in our community, it's not going to work. So we do all have to work together, we have to pull in the same direction, and I'm hoping that I can count on you to do that. Aquafest, going to be fun this year, there's a movement to bring back the Aquafest that we remember 20 years ago with a lot of different things. One of the different aspects, one of the things that we're bringing back for Aquafest is Carnival. If you remember last year in the Centennial Parade, the Carnival, which was the Caribbean, they're coming back again, so that's going to be good. We've made arrangements to have a group of West African drummers that are going to come in, and not only come in and be in the parade, but they're going to put a performance on after the parade, and they're going to work through Parks and Recreation for a study group for that week prior to Aquafest, so that the kids in the area and so on will be able to be a part of it also, and we're pretty excited about that. Let me see if there's anything else in my quick note here. I think the biggest thing that I wanted to update you on is that the fact that we do all need to work together, and I hope that we can, I do want to also mention to the council that I'm very pleased that the mayor is of the same mindset as we are of moving the city forward, and I'm happy that the mayor is there with us on that, and I look forward to working with the mayor and continued effort because I think that he's, I think he's got the right idea. I'm looking forward to that. Do you have any questions on anything that is brought up here? Anybody? Sound good?
There aren't any questions, it sounds like you're going to be busy. Or everybody will be busy.
We're all going to be busy.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, when I, I'm hoping that we can do updates on a monthly basis, and I'm hoping that we can all work together to make this happen. It's not just going to be the Chamber, it's not just going to be the city, I think we all have to work together on it, and so I count on you.
I think you caught a lot of yours off-guard when you said green space. Did you say the Chamber was looking to rent the green space that Wednesdays on the Waterfront?
Guess we were.
And the second, the city is?
Not that I know of, that was news to me.
Do you have a...
Leasing green space? As far as I know, we hadn't even talked to the state yet.
I had one conversation with the state, and the only entity that had leased it to was the city. The city hasn't received any requests from any entities, neither has the downtown designation organization. So Karen and I have had some conversations about whether or not there was interest. They footed the bill last year. Last year, we did the Centennial, and we did Wednesdays on the Waterfront. So that was their contribution to helping out Wednesdays on the Waterfront as well. So if we had enough stimulus to come forward and figure out whether or not the lease base was worthy of being leased, that would have to be a conversation with the downtown organization or the Chamber to see who's going to foot that bill, because we certainly didn't budget, we didn't have any, didn't have any nibbles on that. So one of the things to think about is you have a lease, right? So the lease binds the duration of the space for a period of a time, and then you have your event fees. So any event fees would come under our green space fee, so we've already got that established in our rates and fees ordinance, so...
I'm sorry, are the rent fees, are the event fees something that's paid to the state above and beyond?
No.
Okay, so if you have, if you have an event, then you're charging for it.
It pays for, the city must have insurance on that. The city also takes responsibility for the condition of the green space after it's been used. So if there's damage to anything that falls on us, then we have to go after the person who's leased it from us. So we have to maintain our insurance, we have to maintain our maintenance on it, so you need to have your event fees to cover those types of costs. The lease itself is separate from that, that's the duration, that purchase is the duration. Last year, it was $2,000, it'll be $2,000 again this year if anybody decides to fund that. But again, you still have the permitting process where a layperson can contact BGS through their website and fill out an application and get a response within a couple of days, and you can rent the space for free. What the limitations are is that you can't serve alcohol, and you can't solicit or sell things when you have a BGS permit, but it's free, it doesn't, it doesn't tie our hands in any way.
So...
Go ahead.
So what the, so what the lease does, if I, I dare this right, what the lease does, if the city hold, if the city leases it, it's in the city's name, then more commercial activity can take place there. Somebody can lease the space on their own if the city doesn't, isn't the name holder on it.
Correct.
If somebody wants to do an event and they contact BGS, because they're the ones who control it, they can do that, but there can't be any commercial venture on it.
Correct.
Okay. That's the difference, okay?
Yeah, that is the difference. The other, the other conundrum that you have is that, again, we haven't had anybody approach us. And as you know, Wednesdays on the Waterfront came before you in February, they didn't mention anything about it. So we assumed that they have something up, they have a plan, so we don't know. So you don't have to make any decisions tonight, you don't have to do anything tonight, we've got time to sort this out.
So somebody needs to approach the city about it and...
Or decide that the Chamber would be a really good fit, if they're already ready to step up and pay the lease fees, then they would take on all that responsibility.
Unfortunately, they wouldn't. So they would simply pay for the lease. The only, the only entity that BGS will lease to is the city.
Have to answer my question ahead, they will only write to the city.
Right, so whoever funds the lease, funds the lease, we still have to go through the reservation process, we still have to figure out your event fees.
Right.
So people may say, "I've got a really great event, I want to go to the council and waive the fees," and they come under the events and waive fees policy. So you have, I mean, it's just, it's not that point and shoot. It's not like the Chamber could pay for the lease and say it's all free now. It's more complex than that because the city impairs expense. So you've got to make sure that you're operating this in a way that evens out. Yeah, it's, it's complex. And then if Wednesday's on the Waterfront does come back, you know, that's a whole separate conversation because you've already given them their $1,000. So then, you know, if you decide you're going to lease this, whoever pays for the lease, whether it's the downtown designation, or it's the Chamber, or a combination, or what have you, because we're still the leaseholder, they still have to go through the events request if they want the green space for free. Now you've already given them their $1,000, and your events policy says each time they come before the board, you're supposed to decrease the amount. So you've got, you've got some complexities to balance out.
So, so, oh, sorry.
When would we have to know to, the council have to make a decision? Because I think we need to work on this. You know, I think it's something that we should collaboratively work on to try to figure out a solution to this.
Well, I don't know that there's a problem statement. What I do know is that they're having any interest expressed, other than the Chamber coming before you. We don't have any individuals saying, "We've got a great idea for an event." So again, how do you balance that expensive $2,000 when you don't really have the stimulus to justify it? So that's your, I'm just laying out all your complexities for you.
But I think it's something we need to work on, to try to figure out if we can...
Do you think the city would give the Chamber a letter of support if the Chamber were to negotiate with BGS, and would you be willing to say, "We support the Chamber in leasing the space"?
They won't lease directly to you.
No, but would you support, would you write a letter to say that, that you support it?
What I'm going to say is that you have to have enough liability insurance, you have to be able to maintain the property if an event happens and there's damage to it.
I understand all that, and we do have that.
Those are the reasons that BGS is reticent to lease it to any nonprofit or private entity. And as they say, if they lease it to a nonprofit or a private sector, they really should sell it, so...
We're not talking about bringing Woodstock 50 here. We're talking about a, nothing that's going to damage the thing, and I know that it's not this board's purview to negotiate for the state, but I'm simply asking point-blank that if the city doesn't have an interest, if the city's not going to get involved in that, and if the city, along with the Chamber and everyone else in Newport, wants to have weekly jazz show concerts and weekly Quebecois, do I have your support? You know, will I, will you send me a letter that simply says, "We support the Chamber leasing the space from the state"? Real simple.
The only way that you could do that, Bruce, is to fund the lease between the city and BGS. I mean, that's why I didn't write you the letter, because it's not an option. So that's, and it's futile.
So if we back up really, the, really the beginning of this is somebody's got to come forward to the city and say, "We're interested in legal, we've come up with the $2,000, we want to have events, we've got the money to pay for, the city will sign the lease for it." Is that really where, basically where we are?
Yeah, that's essentially what happened last year. And last year, we had the Centennial, and we had Wednesdays on the Waterfront, and the downtown designation was the one that funded it. So this year, we have the Chamber coming before us. If the Chamber wants to fund the lease, that's been the only entity that's expressed an interest. If they have the funds to fund the lease, then that's a simple, we've already got the template of the lease. The rent is the same amount as it was last year. We have the process for reservations. You have an events policy that's going to allow you what you're going to waive rental or not. So it's not something they're looking for to have capacity to do this year, but if the council decides that that's something that they want to do, it's a quick, it doesn't have to be something that's onerously taxing.
For me, one of the best things that can happen is when business starts getting truly involved in our community. And I believe we have to support something like this, and if it means that we're the ones that hold all the liability, and we have to let him go through our events policy and stuff, I think we have to look at it like, let's not be the person that stops him from having an event. Let's be the person that says, "What do you want to do?", and he says, "I've got a small jazz group coming down, and here's what they're going to do, and here's our crowds that we expect." I think we've got to support everything he wants to put onto the waterfront. And that would be the only way. If we're the naysayers, it does him no good to spend his money.
So I'm not naysaying, I'm outlining a process. So that's two different things.
I understand that.
So it's really important to understand that there is a process, and that we have to adhere to what BGS has...
And he understands the process.
Do you?
I'm becoming more aware of what's going on all the time.
Good. So this isn't about naysaying, this is about creating a process to allow this to happen. And you've got a couple of things that it triggers. It triggers your events policy, it triggers your rates and fees ordinance, and you've got to find somebody to fund the lease. Once you have somebody to fund the lease, it takes on a life of its own. This isn't being naysaying at all, this is being accountable to your policies that you've put in place. This is also accountability in this organization, because you can't have it be a free-for-all. If it's a free-for-all, and, you know, you've got a bunch of people showing up all at the same time, great, but who's banging into who, so you really, you got to organize it.
I don't think he's going to have a jazz band, a carnival, and a dance hall in one night, I think...
He wants to.
I think he's, I think he's clever enough to stage the things that he wants to put there.
So are you suggesting that the city pay for the lease? We don't have any funds, so I do have to...
Okay, I didn't think so. So it really comes back to the entities that are interested need to come forward to the city manager, saying that they have the money for the lease, and we can just kick in the process.
What I was, let's believe at the outset was that the state would lease to the Chamber. And when I say the outset, I'm talking about having been contacted by a state representative saying that the city was not interested in this lease, and would the Chamber be interested in it, to which I said yes. I was then asked to get a letter of support from the city, which doesn't, which has not come. But I, but having said all that, we want 250,000 people, or a percentage of them, to come to Newport every week. We want to see the downtown businesses vibrant, we want to see the green space used for arts and music and entertainment, and we all need to work together in that collaboratively, and I'm hoping that we can.
Yep, I, I guess I would say that the piece that the city can do to work a lot of it is to hold that lease and hold that liability, which I think is pretty big, but so that would, that would certainly be a piece that the city...
Well, I look forward to continuing to work this out with city manager, and I hope that we can.
Yeah, we should be able to.
Because I know, I was just going to say, when, last year, I remember we, the downtown group wanted to lease it, and that's when my conversations with Chris Cole said that I had to come to the city. He's the commissioner of BGS. Did you speak with him?
Mike Markot spoke on our behalf.
Mike, okay.
And was, and Chris was, in an email that I received from Chris, that he was in agreement with moving forward with this.
And I spoke to Chris on Friday to get clarification at Bruce's request, and so I found out what I found out, and I've let you know, so...
So if we could get clarification from BGS on the rules, and it sounds like we've heard two different things about who's allowed to lease it, so if we could get clarification from the horse's mouth, I think that would be a...
I know, I know that they can only lease to us now that I cleared my call, but I was out speaking last year, and a conference call with Chris Cole, that she, the city manager is correct as far as that, they will only lease to the city.
Rules can be changed.
Where this is state, something with state law, I think, it's something with state buildings and...
Could do, just be nice to know for sure.
But I think that Dan is right, that in this regard, it's important for all of us to say, "What can we do to help?".
Right.
And I think that's, that's what we want to do.
Well, that's why I said I want us to try to all work together to come up with a common solution to this.
Really, the easiest thing is if the Chamber wants to fund it, then it's done. If you want to fund the $2,000, then it takes on a life of its own. It's as simple as that. But I don't, I, I did speak to Chris directly Friday, so that is the update, and they said they, they do governmental entity to governmental entity, that was his expression. Said if they start leasing, or if they start leasing to a nonprofit or someone from the private sector, then they have no right to own the property as the state, they want to sell it to them. So his logic was pretty sound. Also said that the municipality has the structures in place to be able to manage the property, and it is the liability, the public works, the police department, so basically, once we have an event, we have other measures in place that automatically are triggered. That's also very appealing to them, so...
And I think one of the big issues last year with the lack of people using it was the lack of marketing. It wasn't marketed. We agreed to be the leaseholder last year. The downtown group paid for the lease, that's where it ended.
The good news to that...
You had Wednesdays on the Waterfront, you had the Centennial, but other than that, it really wasn't marketed to anybody as far as the ability just to come in and...
I think you're 100% right, Paul, and the good news is, is that there is marketing money that's already been made available through the grants that the city has successfully gotten, through what's happening with the NVDA side, and through our own group of interested people that are in that marketing. So you're 100% right, and I think that's our challenge that we, that we can take on and we can do, I think we can market this. So anyway, we're headed in the right direction, we're going to...
We'll keep moving forward, we'll try to work and solve it.
Appreciate the council's help, and I look forward to catching up with you next month, giving you another update. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay. Next item, resolution for Vermont Community Development Block Grant and a vote. We received copies in our pocket of the resolution. The public hearing was held on April 11th. Minutes of the hearing were provided, and we have a sign-in sheet for the public hearing. Mike Grouse, do you have things you want to add, or anything that we need to...
No, I think all the information is there, Mr. Mayor. We did have the public hearing, and took a lot of public comments during the hearing. As you know, this is, we're applying for $100,000 that will be part of the match that we'll need to meet the requirements of the LWCF grant that was awarded to the city a little earlier. In addition to this grant, we will be applying, hopefully, for some additional grants before the year's out, and then also Jess and the Recreation Committee have developed a fundraising plan to raise local funds. So this is a fairly significant project, but we're, I think, between the LWCF and hopefully the Community Development Block Grant, and the fundraising is being done, we'll be well on our way to meet the goal and have a beautiful park and playground.
Questions from council members regarding... Then we would need a motion to pass this resolution.
It's approved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion on the motion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a copy of the minutes from, or some information about the, our grant?
You could have this, because I already...
Okay, you have the original...
No, I got the original of that, no, I get this.
Okay.
This is the minutes. Nope, those are the minutes.
Is that in on the website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There's that.
From what, on the hearing or last meeting?
From this morning.
From this morning, okay.
You need to end up with a catch, yes. Okay.
Well, Troy, you could have this too, Chris. That was the notice of the hearing and the resolution from the CDBG folks. Okay, great, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and we have a discussion, and all those in favor say aye. Oh, we already voted, I'm sorry, we voted. Chris asked the question after, I'm sorry, I'm getting...
It's Chris every time.
It's Chris. Today is the 15th day of April, Tax Day. Tax Day.
And put it down here, please.
Mr. Mayor. Can I get you that page, Chris?
Um...
Did you get that page?
I don't think so.
You could have this. That's the resolution. Some of it's duplicate, but you could have that, that's the resolution page. This paper I have to take home. Jim, I think, needs to sign it.
Jim.
Dr. Jim.
Yep, Dr. Jim.
Dr. Jim. He's in there about...
In there about... Was it my phone?
Mine.
Everybody's looking at her.
It's the chief. Don't embarrass me, I'm coming.
There, we'll give that to the city manager.
Do you want a copy of this?
The next item is a resolution for an electrical car charging station grant application.
Yay! Very excited about this.
Mike?
Go ahead.
So, yeah, thank you. We received some information from council president Leboin about the state has electric vehicle charging grant program. If you do something on municipal property, there's only a 10% match. And we, so Laura and Tom, myself, we've met with a representative from the program here in Newport. The folks at the state seem very excited about the possibility of doing something here. There actually seems to be, based on the statistics, more electric vehicles in Canada than there are in Vermont currently. And they believe that trend is going to continue. But the trend in Vermont is going to continue to go up. So several municipalities have put these stations in. We've done the research, a little bit of research on it, talked to some of the other communities. I talked today with the town of Hartford. They put a new one in in November. There are some costs associated with it. So the grant is essentially going to pay for the equipment pretty much to get it here. Then you're going to have electrical charges as people use the thing. But also, if they don't use it, you're still going to have a minimum fee, just like you do on your electric bill. So there'd be a cost associated with that. There's also cost in order to take the credit card reader. There's costs associated with that. So the hope is that in the long run, users will help defray a portion of that cost. But I think the experience of municipalities that have done this today in Vermont is it does cost them something. So we checked with St. John'sbury. They've had one there in St. John'sbury, I think, since 2014, maybe. It's been a while. Joe Casper's Act has given us information that it costs them about $325 a year net cost to the city after the revenue. In the town of Hartford, they indicated today that now that the thing is up and running, they're getting about $60 a month in revenue. The electric bill is about 80 a month. So they're losing about 20, not counting the, the longer-term fees associated with the credit card reader and that type of thing. So if you look at the credit card service under the grant, that will be paid for for five years. The warranty under the grant will be paid for for five years. So for the first five years, you're not going to have that credit card charge or the warranty charge. After five years, that credit card fee alone is about 500 bucks a year. So you have to figure that going forward. You can buy extended warranty on the equipment if you want. And again, that's about 500 bucks a year. There's nothing that says you have to do that. When you talk to the representatives that deal with this equipment, they say there's not a lot to go wrong with it. So you may or may not want to buy that extended warranty period at the end of five years. So I think the bottom line is that it is going to cost you something if you decide to do this. It's going to cost you a 10% match going in. I think that Tom has kind of scoped out a pretty nice place where this could go. Our match can be in kind. So with Tom doing the excavation for the electrical trenching and for the setting of the equipment and placing of signs, that will probably be enough to make the match for the, for the city. I think in the information that Laura sent you, the total cost would probably be about $30,000. It'll probably be a little less than that. We're still getting estimates. But we're probably in the $25,000 to $30,000 range for, for this equipment total cost. So you're looking at a match of between $2,500 to $3,000. Laura, in your packet, which is on the internet, I did take a look at it before I came. So the whole council packet with all this stuff is on the website. Tom is kind of located in the parking lot off of Coventry Street. They are by the post office. This meets a lot of the requirements that the state is looking for, being in a designated downtown, being close to shopping and amenities. So the people, if they're going to leave their car with these stations, it can take anywhere from one to three hours to charge. So it depends on the vehicle. But that's basically what you're looking at. So they're kind of leaving their car there for an extended period of time while it's running, while it's charging. Many communities, the way they get the fee to offset this, they're charging like by the hour. In Vermont, you can't sell electricity because you're not a utility and you're not regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. You can charge a fee for this. So most towns charging like a dollar an hour for the vehicle. When I talked with Hartford today, they said that takes, the, the average for their last month was almost two hours, one hour and 44 minutes per vehicle that it was taking to charge the thing. So that's pretty much it. The grant application is pretty simple. I think Tom has scoped out a good location. It's one of those things, it's a policy decision for you folks. I think you're going to see more of these cropping up. And probably over time, the costs are going to come down. But it may be a good opportunity while there's state funding available to take advantage of it and be able to offer a downtown amenity to folks that are looking for that electric vehicle charging station. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Tom has done a fair amount of research too, as well as Laura. So happy to try to answer any questions. And we still have time. This isn't due until April 30th. So if there are questions that I can't answer tonight, we can get the answers for you if there's other information you want.
So basically, we pay our basic rate for electricity. So whatever our base kilowatt per hour is as a municipality is what we pay through this unit. So I mean, when we get it hooked up, it's just like a regular, we're adding another meter.
You're gonna have a little, you're gonna.
Another meter for the city.
Meter for that station.
For that station. So we'll pay just basically, it'll be another monthly electric charge on a bill. Just that's, okay. That answers that question.
Yeah, just so I really kind of understand what's going on. So the first question is, does the city get to set the fee, per hour fee?
Yes.
So the city can choose what that is?
Yeah, the city can choose what that is.
Okay. And then depending on what is set for a fee, because there's a basic fee going on, in essence, probably the city will be subsidizing electric cars.
I would say yes.
Okay. And then my other question is, which I'm just curious about. So the company that makes these chargers sells them to whoever is buying them, but they don't come with a warranty. You have to pay for a warranty, but the grant's covering that for five years. But they don't come with a warranty. You have to apply a warranty.
I'm sure they come with a warranty, but you're buying like an extended warranty for that five-year period. So I'm sure they figured all that into the cost. There's definitely going to be some manufacturer's warranty when you purchase the equipment.
And the resiliency of these and weather and things like that, has anybody, do you know if anybody's experienced with maintenance and if something does go wrong?
The people that I've talked with have said that they have not had problems. And I know, like you said, the St. J ones have been there for several years.
Since 14, yeah.
And they, they're working the same today as they did day one. So I'm not aware of major problems. And when I talk with the folks at the state, they've said the same type of thing.
Again, I'm not saying, I'm just.
No, I hear you. It's, it's a policy decision. It really is. It's one of those things that it's two very good sides to it.
So I have a question on this side.
I was just looking at the picture. Is there going to be two spaces for two vehicles to charge?
Correct. Yeah. And so there'll be two stations. The way the port comes is there's like two gas pump handles that would go into the vehicles, two separate credit card stations. And so two vehicles can charge at the same time.
So if you've got, so the credit card, so then we have to run a phone line?
No, you don't. So the way this works is that it's all cellular. So as long as there's cellular service there, it all up late, up late to the cell service. And the way the credit card fee works is that these charging stations, that's part of the fee you're paying for is the charging station. They collect the money, they take the credit card information, they take a percentage. Right now, it's 10% that most of the communities are being charged. And then they send you a check quarterly or, or an ACH deposit quarterly for the balance. So you're not having to monkey around with credit cards. You will get a deposit from this charging company. This, um, charge point, isn't it?
Charge point, yeah, the company, charge point. Okay.
Okay. And I'll just say, as we all know, credit cards depends on what you slide through the machine, how much you're going to be charged. The more, because they're, they're different, different cards have different rates.
Correct.
If it's just a straight card with no bonus points and get 15 points for every 50 cents you spend, you're going to pay a lot more to the company than you are for the person who has just a plain old credit card.
Just like an American Express. You pay a much higher fee for the business than, yeah. Any other questions from council members on this? Then if you so choose, I would entertain a motion if you want to apply for the grant.
I would love to make that motion. I am that excited about it.
Okay, a motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Made a second. Discussion.
I think it's time Mr. Bernier and Jess and all these people look at what we can get for an EV vehicle to demonstrate in our city that we're moving forward with EV.
So you were saying you want to get a vehicle for the rec department?
That's what I heard.
We all know the current treasurer has an EV vehicle.
I do. I don't even use it in the wintertime because I can charge that car and run three days back and forth to work on a charge in the wintertime. You're lucky to get one day out of it. My heater's going, it's, I don't even bother in the wintertime. It does not work. So the only time you're going to charge these vehicles likely is going to be in the summertime. If it takes two hours to charge them, I don't have many vehicles that are going to charge in a day's time. It wouldn't expect to be more than one or two.
Of course, this isn't Hartford. When I talked with them today, he said their last period, they had 34 customers charging. So and that's still not paying for it. So even if you had 34 people using it, it's in a month, it's not going to, even that's not going to pay for it.
But it's more of a, there's really more of a PR type to welcome people who might have an EV car.
It goes on the map. So there's maps all over the place. This company puts out a bunch of information about where charging stations are.
Phones that I know you can have.
Yep, yep. The state has a bunch of information. So once you've got the station, there's a lot of publicity that goes along with it to, to let folks know that Newport has a station.
I'd actually have another question about insurance. So if something goes wrong with it, are like, would we have to get an additional policy or something to cover this?
Probably add the structure to our existing policy.
This policy?
Right, like you can have a car run into it or maybe you'd hit it with a snow plow or something.
Bandolism.
They're pretty resilient.
Yeah, Tom. Not that Tom would ever hit it with a plow. Somebody else with a plow. And then, and I guess our, it must be coverage under an insurance policy that if something, if it malfunctions and it burns up somebody's car, we'd be covered.
So liability would be part of your umbrella policies.
Yep.
Those are all good questions.
Yeah. It's all things to consider because that's why we put it out.
Anything else on it?
No, I'm done.
Look, anybody have anything else on this? We have a motion and a second. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, how much, is it one vehicle per charge, per station or two charge multiple? Two. So Jamie, did they make electric fire trucks yet?
Just don't have a winter fire.
You already said you were getting that car for the rec department. Don't make that.
Oops, sorry.
So this, I'll get it on Charlie's desk.
Okay.
Let's schedule that ribbon cutting. Date's done.
I'm gonna run that, help him for a second.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, new business?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mike.
I've got a half dozen liquor licenses you have to be signing. They're all repeats. When you get the first one, don't sign the first one, the top one. There's two here. Because that's a third class and it's. And there's two for Delvedere and two for Haven on the Hill. Should be seven in all these books that you're signing. Except the one that says, oh, so don't sign the top one, the one of each. Same face, but it's a different license. On your, that works. Sign the one with the pink check. I bet the two we don't sign. So sign everything we got. Two there. You get them both?
Nope. You get this one, I think.
You're right.
Yep, there's two on that one.
These are just too hard to find, Jim. You can flag them, that stuff.
Oh, you gotta sign that one.
Look at that.
Well, look at your, nice colored one.
Do you need this?
Teal. Oh, I found a teal tan. My favorite color.
So this.
That's here there. There's like three in this one, huh?
Covered sticky on all of these. That's fine.
You should. You didn't below sign here.
I know what I'm doing. Your people know what I'm doing.
When somebody starts by saying, don't sign that one.
Don't sign.
All of a sudden, everybody's like, ah!
Don't sign that one. But keep the money below.
There's two on this one? I'm sorry, would everyone need one?
No.
There's three on this one right here. So there are three on that.
This is on the table. So we just have to figure it out.
That's it for me. Is it the new businesses? Okay. Any new businesses?
No.
Anything new?
No.
Anything new, Mr. Ross? Any new businesses?
Anything.
Okay. Well, move on. Old business, Mr. Johnson?
No.
No.
I do have a question. Mr. James mentioned that the Northern Star, have we heard anything about that?
No, there are, the North Country Federal Credit Union's lease expires at the end of this month. So what we've historically done is reach out to them the week before the end of the month and ask them what their plan is. So your next council meeting is May 6th, so it may not, I don't know. If it's just another renewal, I'll let you know. I'll renew it and let you know because that's what your motion allows me to do. If there's a change, if there's a change in anything, it'll be on the May 6th agenda. Good question. Why'd you ask that?
My last conversation is that they're waiting on paperwork. Some maritime group in Rhode Island or something with paperwork that they're waiting on to finalize everything, is what I was told by Pat Martell. So it's a waiting game.
Mr. Maritime Group, you mean a regulatory...
Something with regulatory or something. He didn't get into it. He just said that there's a stack of paperwork they had to fill out and they're waiting for this paperwork and some place in Rhode Island is what he had told me. That's all I know, is it's a waiting game. That's what he had told me. I asked him at the, I asked him at the event at the Career Center, the reading board event that night when he was there. Any other old business? Old business? Any old business? Old business thing? Okay. The next city council meeting will be Monday, May 6th, 2019, 6:30 PM here. We can celebrate because Vanilla Ice sank on the weekend, so spring is officially here. You missed it by four days. So that's our next meeting. So we need a motion to adjourn at 7:25.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.